We'll go in again tonight. We want to welcome everyone to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners Monthly Meeting, and we've got some honored guests in here that we'll introduce here in a minute. But as always, we begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand. Commissioner Tony Brown will lead us in our prayer, and Mr. Chris Allison do our pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you most of all, Father, for your salvation. We thank you for the time that you've given us to come before you and before our community, Father, to make decisions, God, that we hope will uplift our community and make it a better place for all those that make up a part of it. And we ask you to help us in every endeavor that we do, Father, and help us to make the right decisions, that your name would be glorified at the end, Father. And, God, we just thank you for all that you've done and all you're gonna do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we see? Okay, gentlemen, we have the approval of minutes. What's the pleasure of the board?
Let's remove.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light side. We do have tonight's agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions by staff and/or commissioners tonight? I do have one I wanted to add. Myself and Commissioner Ellis talked earlier. It'd be the pleasure of the board. We've got just a flood of illegal immigration happening in the United States of America. And I know what we would do would be just more ceremonial, but I think that we, as a board, need to go on record where we stand with illegal immigration and the costs associated with it. And I like to have staff look at the resolutions that we would send to our two state senators, to the president, the vice president, and then do the same to our house members, representatives in Raleigh. So I want to have that added.
So move.
Okay, motion added?
Second.
Second discussion, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we'll have that added under new business. Let's move to our first thing on the agenda. Now, we've got, we've got some great honored guests with us tonight. Of course, everybody, it's honored to have everybody in the room, of course, but we do want to recognize great accomplishments. And tonight, we have got state champions in the room, y'all. We've got the New Manah Wind, boys and girls both won the state championship in their respective division this year. So the board wanted to bring y'all ladies in first, of course, and recognize you on your great accomplishment, okay? Where's Coach at? Coach Styles? Come on up here, sir. Come on up. Give him a hand. Come to the podium, my friend. To the podium. All right, so it's not every day we get the pleasure of having state champions come into boardroom. So we want you to, I mean, I know the game, the championship game was what, a four or five-point game?
Unfortunately, yes.
So it's close. And so we want to introduce the girls tonight, and we've got a resolution that the board will vote on here in a second to honor the great season you ladies had. You did very good, Representative McDowell County and your school. Great. So at this time, I'll ask Vice Chairman Brown to read the resolution, Coach, and then we're gonna recognize the girls.
Resolution in honor of the New Manah Girls Basketball Team says, "Whereas the McDowell County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the outstanding performance by the student athletes and the coaches of the New Manah Christian School Girls Basketball Team during the 2023-2024 basketball season. Whereas the New Manah Christian School Girls Basketball Team advanced through the North Carolina Christian School Association, finishing the season with a 16-4 record. Whereas there was a bye playoff game, whereas the state tournament game victory of 59 to 35 against Oak Level Christian, Stokesdale, North Carolina, and the game victory of 53-46 against Scotland Christian, Laurinburg, North Carolina, and the state championship game with a victory of 47-42 against Calvary Christian School in King, North Carolina. Whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the McDowell County Board of Commissioners to recognize and congratulate head basketball coach Curtis Styles and assistant coaches Kobe Davis and Daily Styles. The team players are Brianna Duckworth, sophomore..."
Vice Chairman, if you could, when the vice chairman says your name, can you stand up and come up to the front right here and face the crowd?
Okay. Brianna Duckworth, sophomore. Kaylee Lowry, sophomore. Andrea Mitchell, junior. Casey Phillips, freshman. Elvie Wiseman, sophomore. And Lily Byrd, junior. Whereas individual honors go to Aniston Styles, freshman, all-region, Emily Randolph, junior. And Bella Snyder. No, is that correct? Be it resolved by the members of the McDowell County Board of Commissioners that the student athletes and coaching staff of New Manah Lady Wind are to be congratulated on the win in North Carolina Christian School Association, finishing first seed in the 1A West, adopted this 11th day of March 2024. Chairman, Chairman of the Board, David Walker.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, board. So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light side. Now, we want to have a, we want to get a picture of you ladies. So everybody, y'all sort of get right up in here. I want the commissioners come out, and we will get this to the country. It's good to have the administrator, Mr. Ewing, with us today. So, Mr. Ewing, good to have you also, sir. You're more than welcome to come up and get a picture if you so desire. Come on upstairs. Now, this is the official nick, right, ladies? Y'all got to cut down.
Cut this down.
That's what I'm talking about. All right, y'all, give another hand up there. Hey, listen, y'all, we just got moved because they got no seniors. So look out, stay for coming in, right? Okay, this time, we want to recognize the Manah Wind varsity boys team. Coach, bring your team on in, sir. Come on in. It's good to have Coach Garden with us tonight. And so, Coach, tell us a little bit about your championship game.
The championship game thankfully was a little boring. We did have a great crowd that came down to support us, and so the first couple of quarters were real exciting, and then we kind of pulled away. So I wasn't too upset that it was just kind of a little...
So in other words, it was a blowout, right?
It was.
All right.
Yeah. Well, we had a great tournament. They really played well, probably the best we've played all year. I think we won by 27, 28, and 32. So, yeah, it was a pretty good tournament.
How many seniors do you have?
We have three.
Three seniors.
Yep.
Well, on behalf of the board, we want to say congratulations to the guys on winning the state championship. We're very proud of you. If you don't mind, Commissioner Green will read the resolution, and we want the guys to come in when they call their names out.
Okay. Before I read the resolution, I see you guys quite often, but I don't get to address you. I'm proud of you for the accomplishment that you've made, but I'm proud of you for a much greater reason, because I know what kind of men and ladies that you are and what you're becoming. And I just want you to know from the bottom of my heart how proud I am of you.
Thank you.
Whereas the McDowell County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the outstanding performance by the student athletes and the coaches of the New Manah Christian School Boys Wind Basketball Team during the 23-24 basketball season. Whereas the New Manah Christian School Boys Basketball Team advanced through the North Carolina Christian School Association, finishing the season second seed in the NCCSA 1A West with a 16-5 record. Whereas the playoff game victory of 63-61 against Tabernacle Christian in Monroe, North Carolina. Whereas the state tournament game victory of 74 to 71 to 44 against Calvary Christian in King, North Carolina, and the game victory of 66-38 against Fellowship Christian Durham, North Carolina. Whereas the championship game victory of 76-44 against Scotland Christian in Laurinburg, North Carolina. Whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the McDowell County Board of Commissioners to recognize and congratulate head basketball coach, boy, it's hard for me to say, Charlie Garden, assistant coaches Aaron Walker, Sam Phillips, and Spencer Garden. The team players are Alec Brenneman, junior. Matthew Demick, senior. Brody Davis, junior. Blake Baker, junior. Tommy Honeycutt, junior. Cannon Stamey, senior. Whereas individual honors go to A.G. Good, senior. All-region, and Michael Wagner, junior, all-state. Be it resolved by the members of the McDowell County Board of Commissioners that the student athletes and coaching staff of New Manah Boys Wind are to be congratulated on the winning the North Carolina Christian School Association State Championship, adopted this the 11th day of March 2024. David Walker, Chairman.
Do I have here a motion from the board to adopt the resolution as read?
So move.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light side. Okay, congratulations, guys. Stay right where you're at. Did we forget somebody? I see the athletic director coming down. Good to have you. And interestingly, Coach is right, the assistant coach right here, Charlie. What's his name?
Spencer.
Spencer, okay. We want to know who he is. All right?
Will we put the girls in, too?
Sure.
Yeah, bring them back.
Come on, girls.
Hold tight, y'all. We down news is behind her.
Hey, hold tight, y'all. McDowell News is behind her.
Ready? One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three.
All right, y'all, give a big hand. Coach, thank you. Very good job. Well done. We look forward to bringing y'all back next year when you win. All right. Now, y'all are welcome to stay, or if you want to go, you can go, too, whatever you want to do. Y'all, good evening. Okay, next item on our appointment schedule tonight is Item B. This is our Tourism Development Authority update. We have the director, Mr. Shannon Oden, with us, sir. So come on up. Good to have you tonight, my friend.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight, Chairman. Prepared a brief PowerPoint. I won't keep you too long, but I did want to give you an update since I started this position since last May. We have been really going at it and just a lot of really exciting things going on, a lot of new programming that we are really excited about. So I'll run through some of that, but I really just wanted to start with some of the data that showed about the economic impact that we have here in McDowell County. See if I can advance this with the pointer. Doesn't seem to be advancing. Do you know if it's going to...
I think if you just tell him the next one, he should be able to do it for you.
If you can go to the next slide. Thank you. This right here really is the number that is to focus on. The, really, the figures come in in a slight lag. We have the latest data from 2022, shows domestic and international visitors to and within McDowell County spending $107 million. That's an increase of 6.6% over 2021. That is really a direct employee of 660 people, which amounts for $26 million in total payroll generated by tourism here in McDowell County. So 660 people there. As you can see, state tax revenue generated came to $3.8 million through state sales tax and excise taxes, and taxes on personal and corporate income as well. About $3.7 million in local taxes were generated from sales and property tax revenue, from travel-generated and travel-supported businesses. And this all comes from Visit NC. Travel to western North Carolina averaged about 2.5 nights. That's two of three trips, really, over 2.5 nights. You can see there the average travel party size of three people, average spending per trip $479, and then 94% of the respondents expressed satisfaction and quality with their outdoor experience here, which is something that we promote heavily. Just to back up a second, to remind you of what the TDA is, back in 1983, the General Assembly enacted legislation that allowed counties to pass an occupancy tax law. Occupancy tax, for you, as a general reminder, is a tax that is relatively straightforward. Guests pay a small fee in addition to their room rate that is added on to their accommodations tax. The tax is then remitted monthly by the lodging owner to the local government, and then this revenue is generated by the TDA. There are provisions of what we can spend this funding on. As you most likely know, 2/3 must be spent on marketing right now, and then a third can be spent on infrastructure projects that are tourism-related or visitor-related here in the county. Currently, right now, our tax is at 5%, and the maximum allowed by law is at 6%. Just to show some examples of support that we have done over the last few years, really direct promotions with the Mountain Glory Festival, the Old Fort Trails and Trains Festival, the Fourth of July Rodeo Bigfoot Festival, North Carolina Bluegrass Festival, Christmas and Marion Events. We have direct monetary support through events in the area, such as the ASAP Farm Tour, the Rock and Roller Bike Race, other mountain biking races such as the Pisgah Enduro, Gateway Youth Express, the Heartbreaker 100. Also, a lot of in-kind support, for example, of the Old Fort 150 Project, which just concluded this past year, the Mountain Gateway Museum, the Old Fort Trails Project, again, the Bigfoot Festival, McDowell Arts Council, Historic Carson House. So all this is really, when I say in-kind, that is through the marketing that we do, through some of our ad buys, through our marketing campaigns. We are also big collaborators with other local businesses and organizations, such as the Marion Business Association, the McDowell Chamber, the Little Switzerland Business Association, the G5 Trail Collective, and the McDowell Trails Association. One thing I'll focus on a little bit, just briefly, is the McDowell Tourism Master Plan, which was formulated, I'd say, probably maybe four years ago. This is a 15-year plan that ensures that the TDA effectively stewards capital project funding. I'll just briefly touch on some of the funding that we did here, particularly those that directly supported through this accommodations tax, including the Gateway Trails, which includes the Bernard Mountain Trail, the Catawba Falls Trail, which will just reopen here in the early summer, the Old Fontiflora Trail, Arrowhead Park, the Peavine Trail, and Trussell Improvements that are ongoing, the Foothills Trail Conservancy, the Miller Entertainment Complex, and Phillips Landing. All of these projects, we've directly supported through accommodations tax through that 1/3 project budget that we can administer. Just for instance, this pipe, this project here in the pipeline right now, the Catawba Rivers, or excuse me, Catawba Avenue Streetscape, there was about a $200,000 match put in through the TDA over the last couple of years. That included, you know, some surveying, preliminary engineering, final engineering, hopefully going to bid this fall. And there'll be some more ask coming up for that as well from the TDA that will be, hopefully be able to match. I think the idea is to apply for some infrastructure grants, and so we're looking forward to getting that project underway. Another project that is underway as well is the Mill Creek Project. That will be a really a beautiful spot in downtown Old Fort, which will include the Market Pavilion, new stream restoration, a bridge connector, more landscaping, really just a center focal point for Old Fort there. We also have a, excuse me, a wayfinding project, which is underway. Really, an ongoing project here. We're in cooperation with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and it will be 24 new signs that are going into the county. I'm proud to say that we have got approval for at least 24 to go in, as our budget will continue to allow us. Those will be centered all throughout the county. As you know, the, some of the existing sign lacks consistent branding, so we hope to improve that. We'll be replacing some of the blue signs, some of the brown signs you see around the county as well. This is an example of the wayfinding sign with the new branding that we'll be moving towards. Really give the visitor a sense of place and direction as they move about the county. I think it'll be a lot safer for visitors. They won't be turning around in the middle of the roads. They'll be able to have clear directions. So I think we're really looking forward to getting this project started as well. Just to recap, some of the project funding over the last few years, you can see here a full list of projects that we have helped fund, including the McDowell House, the Phillips Landing, Fontiflora, Arrowhead Park, all these wonderful projects that enhance the visitor and local experience. Just to touch a little bit on the print and the advertising that we're doing throughout the area, this is, of course, regional, meant to be outside of the area to attract overnight visitation. We're in major print publications like Our State Magazine, WNC, Blue Ridge Journal, the Visit NC Vacation Guide. We are doing digital advertising on Romantic Asheville through Facebook, Google, Instagram ads, YouTube, which is a huge search platform. We are doing programmatic display advertising, and then we picked up some new ad campaigns with Smithsonian and with PBS North Carolina. Just a little bit of the brochures that we developed through TDA funding as well. We have guides and brochures about really every region of the county, including Little Switzerland. We have a High Spirits Trail brochure, a pull-out, pull-off map that is very popular with lodging properties that show the walking trails, the waterfalls, places of business. We have brochures that focus on Old Fort and just general advertising that really calls attention to the natural assets and to the five main areas that we continually focus on in our county. Couple other ad examples that we're running currently, one that you can see here on the left would be, was in WNC Magazine, one of the programmatic ads on the right, which really focused on holiday shopping over Christmas. And we also have digital advertising that really is that call to action that drives it to the website for more information and to possibly request a brochure. This is a billboard that's running outside of the Columbia, South Carolina market off of I-77. So as you're driving out of Columbia on the way towards Charlotte, you probably see this billboard and hopefully entices you to spend a little money in our area. This is just a sort of a segment that future partners came out with just back in January, which really shows where most travelers are finding information on the website or online, email, websites found via search engines, Facebook, online content. You can see are really the top five, followed by other social media platforms like Instagram, streaming video services, like I mentioned, YouTube, Hulu, lifestyle magazines. So really, this is what makes up the bulk of our marketing campaign, is where visitors are going to find us. So it's really, again, a mix of print, online, out of home, all those types of things that we're using the funding for. This is a brief snapshot of website visits to our blueridgetraveler.com. Steady increases from physical year 21, 22 versus 23, 24. You can see just back in February, two years ago, we had about 10,000 visitors to the website. In the month of February, this past February, we had 18,800. That's an increase of 24%. And you can see that really increased throughout the physical year, from anywhere from the high of 98% back in September through just the low there. We had a little dip in August of traffic over the previous physical year. But overall, the stats look really good for the website. Another thing that's really strong for our state and this area particularly is national park spending. One thing I'll just touch on is this data that the National Park Service put out, which shows the top 15 states by visitor spending. Number two on the list, North Carolina. That is really a great stat, just behind California. You know how many national parks are out in California. You can see the visitation for 2023 right now. This just came out with the Blue Ridge Parkway leading number one national park in the country. 16 million visitors came through along some part of the Blue Ridge Parkway over 2023. Great Smoky Mountains, not far behind, 13 million. Still a great asset that we can use to entice people to come visit us on a nice southern road trip. Other North Carolina national parks that are really high up in that is, of course, Cape Patters National Seashore, Carl Sandberg Home, and then the Over Mountain Victory Trail there. North Carolina visitor spending, you can see really with tourism spending, this is the breakdown in that $2.5 billion that was spent in North Carolina. Hotels, number one, over half, that's in the red. Number two, restaurants, I'd say close by behind that would be groceries, and then recreational industries, that's your outdoor businesses, all that making up that visitor spending in North Carolina. Another big number that I'll focus on, which we really focus on, again, with our marketing, is the outdoor recreation in the area. $11.8 billion spent in North Carolina last year. That is, again, a really another strong number. Of course, last year was the year of the trail that the whole state celebrated. The McDowell Trails Association did a phenomenal job of promoting that throughout the year with some of their hikes. And so we really will carry that through this year with some new branding going into the great Trail State, which they're rolling over to this year. Again, outdoor recreation accounts for 130,000 jobs in North Carolina. That's 2.7% of all employees in the state. And those top industries, boating, fishing, you know, two huge assets we have with Lake James, Curtis Creek, Mill Creek, the Catawba River, hunting, shooting. I just talked to a guy at the gym class with the Marion Business Association a couple of weeks ago, that's starting an archery business here in town, based on some of these numbers here. Of course, motorcycling and ATV. Of course, motorcycling and ATV also big. Another segment, again, I mentioned trout fishing is huge. That's an economic impact of $1.3 billion in North Carolina. 370,000 anglers spent 4.6 million days trout fishing in North Carolina. That's 48,000 anglers traveled to North Carolina, just specifically to fish. And then trout fishing supports over 11,000 jobs in the state. So again, you can see the impact of just fishing alone here. You can see the average angler took nine trout fishing trips, spent 12.5 days trout fishing. When you combine all that together with related expenditures, that impact is $1.3 billion. New program we're also excited about this year is the Outside in Sea. This is the first year for this, and this is building on the campaign that the Great Trail State started. But we are going to be a designated trail town. So we'll be using Old Fort as the center for that. But all the county will be represented in the new Trail Town Guide that Visit NC will be supporting through this project. It will really focus on destination stewardship, responsible travel, and then sustainable tourism. That's another big focus that we want people to understand. When they come to the county, they want to recreate responsibly. They don't want to throw litter. You don't want to, if you pack something in, you want to pack it out. You want to leave no trace. We also want to talk about accessible outdoors. We'll be going through and looking at ADA compliant trails. We'll be looking at trails and giving a little more descriptions on the trails that you can go on. And so that person that might have a disability can then decide themselves if they want to get on a trail based on the description that we have for them. So this is all part of this new program that Visit NC is rolling out this year. So we're very excited about that. Just to wrap it up a little bit, I'd say let's continue to grow accommodations tax revenue. Again, we're currently at 5%. Most every, I'd say every other county surrounding us is at the maximum 6%. So I think for us to stay competitive, that's something that we really need to look at. As you can see, for the last five years, accommodations taxes was, it took a dramatic leap during COVID, as everyone recognizes the impact COVID had on outdoor and rural destinations as people flock from cities and urban areas. But from 2021 to 2023, not a huge influx of additional revenue. So you can see really only about $200,000 in the last three years. So we've sort of, I think, hit this plateau. So to stay competitive with other counties, to put more money into these infrastructure projects that we're talking about, and to be competitive in the tourism landscape, I think that's sort of something we need to look at. Some additional opportunities with an increase of 1% would be something like the Andrews Geyser's repairs, which is ongoing. I've talked about the Peavine Trail. But we could do it for other things like grant opportunities and identification, some professional project management, visitor center improvements, trailhead kiosk and trail interpretation. So once you get on the trails, there'll be more interpretation about the history and information about the area. Continue to put in the wayfinding, updated gateway signs into Marion and Old Fort, working with the business associations, the Fontiflora Trail Extension, and then the Marion Streetscape improvements. Just an example, you know, going back to the Tourism Master Plan, this is Henderson Street looking north. This is what it currently looks like. And then the next slide will show what it could look like according to the Tourism Master Plan. So again, talking about specific project funding that elevates the quality of life for locals and visitors itself. Just finish with a brief video here, if this will play, which is just a 30-second commercial that runs on some of the streaming platforms. So thank you very much. That concludes my presentation, but I would love to entertain any questions if there are any. But again, looking forward to continued working with you, our local partners, stakeholders in the area, to continue to grow tourism. So thank you.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. We have questions by board members.
Mr. Odom, I'd just like to ask, of the hotels, VRBOs, Airbnbs, the percent that you're talking, can you tell us what the counts have been over the, over the years? Not just the money, but the amount of Airbnbs and stuff like that from, for the past few years?
That is a great question, something we are looking at. I just actually had a meeting last month with a group based in Colorado called AirDNA. What they do is they have proprietary software that pulls data from Airbnb into their dashboard. And then that is basically research that you subscribe to, which will give you an idea of the level of activity going on on Airbnb or VRBOs.
Okay. With the people that are not involved in those, how does the TDA collect the tax dollar from the private person that doesn't, doesn't use those platforms?
So it goes back to the individual property owner. So what happens there is basically, I think the triggering event is when you have a business license and you apply to be a hotel or a bed and breakfast. That triggers the mechanism to complete the accommodations tax remedal form. That then goes back to the county. But we do not actually see, we only see the gross result of that that's remitted to us. So we do not see a breakdown based on whether it was submitted by a hotel, by Airbnb, VRBO, or a bed and breakfast. So it does not give us that breakdown of mix. What I can tell you though is my thought is looking at the snapshot that AirDNA showed us, the most recent figure I had, there were about 600 Airbnbs in McDowell County right now. So of course, that's based on, that's a seasonal figure as well. So there'll be probably less in the winter than there are in the summer, based on when a homeowner might decide to open their home for that. So that's something that this dashboard will give us though. It gives us pacing, gives us a forward view of accommodations level. So it gives you all that information. So I think it will be a useful tool for us to look at the overall level of activity in the county. But again, that does not tell us individual hotels, the amounts that they give us. So we can't really break that out, and I think it's sort of designed that way. So we can't favor one entity over another, say, in our promotion. We, you know, that's, I think, the idea there of not showing the TDA precisely that breakdown.
Is only revenue driven by the TDA accommodations only?
Yes, sir. So the only funding we have is through the 5% accommodations tax, which visitors pay on hotel, lodging, Airbnb, VRBO.
From the perspective of commissioner, in my opinion, tax is not a good word here in the county. And the, it's, I would like to request the, you said approximately 600 Airbnbs. Can you get us that data for '22, '21, and '20? You did have dollar figures up there. I'm not prepared to make a motion or support the increase at this time. I'd like to get a little bit more information, if you could do that.
Yeah, we'll pull as much as we can. Like I say, we're working with two groups, AirDNA, another one called Key Data. They work with property management companies as well. So that is if you're going through Greybeard Realty and they're renting your property out for you, there's a group called Key Data, which pulls in that information. AirDNA pulls in some initial information that Airbnb gives you. Then they have their own algorithm that populates the rest of that dashboard based on looking at every entity that is booking, other channels, booking channels. So if you're on another website booking something that isn't Airbnb, they also take in that data. So what I can try to find out is there is some historical data through AirDNA. So I could show you the trend of the number of properties that are out there. Is that sort of what you're asking?
Yes. And the statement you made at the end of your presentation, to be competitive, we needed to increase to match the surrounding counties. Why do you think that that is a benefit? Because, again, the people that own the Airbnbs or the hotels or they, that is a tax that's going to be coming out of their profit. So from that perspective, why did you say it that way?
Really because we've talked to our large hoteliers here. So I've talked to the Switzerland Inn, I've talked to the Holiday Inn Express. They see no problem with going to 6% really because they do see the competitive nature that tourism is in. They see that other counties are spending more marketing. They're spending more on their infrastructure projects than we are. So in order to keep up with those other counties, we have to be in that same level of competitiveness. That's, that's really what that statement's based on. The hoteliers do not see this as coming out of their profit. They see this as a pass-through to the customers. And from my experience in tourism, I have not seen any resistance from a 1% increase that makes anyone contemplate coming to a destination because of the accommodations tax level itself. It may come into play in larger urban areas like, say, Charleston, South Carolina, which has about a 21% accommodations tax. You know, when you're comparing that to, say, another city and theirs is maybe at 10% and one is at 21%, you might have a little bit of that. But when you're talking about the max of 6% and then one hotel's at 5% and others at 6%, it doesn't seem to be a lot of rate resistance from visitors when they look at it from that perspective.
I appreciate it. Good presentation.
Thank you.
The, the services that you're talking about that, where you gather the data, are they able to give you historical data like he's talking about?
I think they are. I think they're going, they can go back to a certain level. Based on, again, if we had been subscribing to this, so this actually is a cost for us as well. You know, the figure I saw was about $6,000 a year just to have this data, access to the data. So again, that's a research, you know, that we can spend money on to get this. But I do believe that when you sign up for this, they'll give you historical data in the rears for that. That's.
I had asked Mr. Odom a question before the meeting started regarding hotels and how they rent their rooms out. It's been a common practice of McDowell and other counties surrounding that if you live within a certain distance, like if you live in McDowell County, you don't have the ability to rent a hotel room in McDowell County. They do that to keep folks from having parties and stuff and tearing their hotels up. But it's just, in my opinion, not a tax that would impact the citizens of McDowell as much as it would those folks wanting to come into McDowell.
That's right. That's, the nice thing about this tax actually is it's not paid by locals. It is paid by visitors, which in turn, we're working hard to get to the county through the marketing that we're doing.
But now the locals do get the benefit though. What I always saw in the presentation of the marketing of the area, which is going, which were the most visited national park so far this year. So they do get a benefit.
Sure. You know, all the peripheral businesses that are tourism-related, so like your outfitters, your stores, your retail, are benefiting from tourism. So that is correct, and that sort of plays into the state tax.
Which increases your receipt for point awards and sales tax.
Yeah, exactly. So that was some of the earlier figures about the sales tax collected through that, through those tourism-related businesses as well. So it definitely creates a better quality of life for locals, you know, when we're, when we're funding these trails, like the Peavine Trail or the McDowell House. You know, those are, those are places that the locals can definitely benefit and bring up more of a healthy, quality way of life as well.
Can you get the data in the next 30 days back to staff? And then we'll go from there. That's good.
Do I hear a motion to?
I'll make a motion to table it for 30 days.
Discussion, all favors say aye. And you oppose like aye. All right. Thanks for having a great presentation tonight. Thanks so much. Okay, this time let's go ahead and move to item C on our appointment schedule. This is the telecommunications tower ordinance hearing. We have Mr. Ron Harmon with us, so Ron, come forward, sir. And we have a long-serving planning board member, Mr. Dennis Whitson, in attendance. Anybody else present on your planning board? Okay. All right.
Okay, so several months ago, the planning board made a recommendation that the overall height of cell towers is currently capped at 199, be dropped to 179 due to the Spectrum Act, which is, allows for a one-time 10% overall tower height increase of 20 feet, whichever is more. The board's trying to be proactive. The goal of the ordinance was always to keep lighting off towers. 200 feet is that magic number where the light goes on. So the board wants to drop that down 20 feet. So when the Spectrum Act is utilized, we can hopefully still keep towers under 200 feet. But we have to have a public hearing to change that in the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Do we need a motion to go in that public hearing?
You can declare it.
Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead and declare the board into a public hearing setting to receive comment concerning the proposed cell tower ordinance. So do we have anybody on this side that wishes to speak concerning this? If so, state your name and come to the podium, please. Okay? Anybody on the left-hand side? There being none, do you hear most to go out of public hearing setting?
So.
Discussion, all favors say aye. Mr. Whitson, anything you need to add, sir?
No, sir. It's been duly advertised, and you're now allowed to make the recommended change.
Okay, what's the question?
We're not to change.
So. Discussion, all favors say aye. And you oppose like aye. Okay? All right. Thank you, Ron. And go ahead.
Okay, so the next item we have is a road, a letter of credit for the reserves at Barefoot Cliff. This is a, an RV park that's going in where lots will be sold and/or leased. The roads will not be completed prior to the conveyance of lots. So our ordinance requires that a road bond or a letter of credit be posted, and the Board of Commissioners has to accept that. So that's before you.
Who is the actual developer?
They're called Bethel Partners. And Dennis, are you familiar with the developer?
We met with them a couple of days, we met with them on site a couple of years ago, at the planning stages and have advised them all we felt like was necessary. And they took our advice, and it's going to be a very nicely done campground. One gentleman is, well, they both have some experience in other areas and other places. I've had to pull up my emails to use their background, but they relate to this area for personal, desire to build and use. And I think they both retired and are gone now.
They do.
So they are somewhat considered local now in that perspective.
Do y'all recommend this approval?
The planning board did approve the, the final plat.
Again, they, they will ask more questions and suggestions, and anything that would draw to their attention may have thrown in the dress to our satisfaction.
Okay. Comments, questions? What's the question, the board?
We approved the letter of credit.
Okay. Discussion, all favors say aye. And you oppose like aye. Okay, third item.
The planning board was asked their opinion about having roads paved in new subdivisions based on some issues that had been expressed by buyers and property owners. And during a discussion last month, the planning board meeting, came to a consensus that the market would drive the need for paving. They felt like with affordable housing being needed, putting paving into that scenario would price houses out of the market. One example we had, Marty Randall, who's a planning board member, has worked on a project in Mitchell County. Three-quarter of a mile road, if he did it with gravel to DOT, not, non-DOT specs, it was going to be $600,000. If he did it to DOT specs with concrete or with asphalt, it was going to be $2.8 million. So the board felt that it was best to let the market drive it, let the developers pave that want to pave and let the others. In other words, they're saying that the buyer has the choice of whether they buy in a paved subdivision or not.
Does a ordinance we have on the BIC already cover somewhat what we're talking about anyway?
We do. If your grade exceeds 12%, you have to pave that section of the drive that exceeds 12%.
Well, when you think about it, the majority of these developments create a POA or a Property Owners Association, and then typically they have funds that are taken every year annually by the property owners and put into an escrow or whatever to take care of those particular issues. So.
Does it depend on the market for that?
Yeah.
I think our caution has been, we don't want another Wild Ridges.
Correct. And, and trust me, the planning board watches for that like a hawk. We, we make sure that when some. We make sure that when something's submitted, that it's put together as well as it can be. Those guys, they scrutinize each and every submittal, so you don't have to worry about that.
I just don't want to see a developer come in and build roads that in two years are impassable for the folks that are buying the property.
And one of the things that the board talked about was maintenance. A lot of subdivisions you go into that have road issues, the culverts and the ditches are not clean. So water is the worst deterrent for healthy roads. So something as simple as cleaning ditches, which sounds simple, would make a huge difference on a paved and/or gravel road.
Again, there's things that could be taken care of by the Property Owners Association.
Yes, sir.
And we do have the planning board, we have, the composition of that board is very diverse from many different walks and backgrounds and we have some long-serving members down there too that have a lot of experience. And the board definitely values the opinion of the planning board. That's why we wanted you to look at it to make sure we weren't missing anything, as Commissioner Green has said and Mr. Brown, everybody's brought up good points. We want to make sure that we're having responsible development of the properties within McDowell County. All right, any other comments, questions?
With no change, we don't need to make a motion.
Okay. Ryan, thanks, sir. Dennis, thank you for your service, sir. At this time, let's move to item D. This is our EMS cardiac program update. We have our director, Mr. Keller, with us and his team. So welcome. Y'all did a fantastic job. William, the floor is yours. We look forward to hearing about the program.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity for us to present tonight. Just a second, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Director Jones and let her do the presentation. But I wanted to introduce, everyone knows Deputy Director Jones. We got our training officer, Brenda Greta, who's a captain. Brenda, raise your hand. Taylor Leopold is, was formerly community paramedic. She's also a registered nurse, strong background in substance use disorders and mental health. She's your new substance use disorder coordinator through the opioid settlement funds. So we appreciate her being here. She's done a lot of work on the EMS side for years with us and especially on this project. And then our 911 manager, Amberly Buff, and Training Lieutenant Karen Step. Adrian's going to talk in just a second about our cardiac arrest program. And what I want to highlight before I turn it over is the tremendous amount of improvement that we have seen, steady improvement through the years. Cardiac arrest is something that can happen to any one of us in this room right now. It could happen to anyone in our family. And being in a rural county makes this a real challenge for emergency services. A person is brain dead within four to six minutes if they are not getting oxygen to the brain. And it all starts with the recognition of the public, recognizing the cardiac arrest, calling our 911 center, and then the activation of the chain of survival, which clearly starts with a bystander who witnesses the person go down. The chain of survival, which we've worked on tremendously through the years with all of our partners in the community, is what has got us to the point that we're at now. And then the most important part is we continue to look forward to push these resuscitation rates even higher than what we have seen in the past several years. So I'm going to turn it over to Adrian. Appreciate our team's work. They do excellent work every single day and I can't say enough good things about them.
Getting into the board, thank you again for the opportunity to share a little bit about the work we're doing with our cardiac arrest care. We'll see if I can get mind work. Next slide. So a part of what we're doing, as Will said, is this is a multidisciplinary approach. It's not just EMS, it's not just the 911 center. This takes all of our partners in fire rescue, also our law enforcement, who are very engaged. In 2022, kind of during COVID really, we joined Duke University to participate in a statewide trial for cardiac arrest care. And what they're doing is tracking different counties and all the different interventions that we're doing and then seeing who's got the best rates of survival, what practices are working. And of course, the primary goal is to be discharged from the hospital with a good neurological outcome, meaning, you know, you can still walk and talk and be cognizant. Secondary outcomes, some things that are the goals of this project are to train 10% of our citizens that live here with CPR and that can just be bystander CPR, it doesn't have to be an AHA card, and then defibrillation prior to EMS arrival. So we're tracking, were AEDs applied prior to arrival, was a shock advised, who put those AEDs on and how are they accessible? Here you can see the counties that are participating. So the intervention arms, those are the counties that they're tracking the intervention. So those are in red. So you can see McDowell is one of those. The control arms are arms that maybe aren't doing new interventions, they're continuing what you would call the status quo of cardiac arrest care. And then there are the counties that of course, aren't participating. So what I wanted to highlight on these metrics, and you can't necessarily see these and it can look a little busy, but on the left column here, you can see McDowell County and then on the right, you can see all the other intervention arms across the state. Obviously, most of our cardiac arrests occur in the private setting in the home. CPR, bystander initiated CPR, we are ahead, meaning that someone calls 911, they're quick to recognize the cardiac arrest and then they're immediately starting that CPR. So we're 44% statewide average is 41%. So that contributes directly to our good cardiac arrest care and our survival rates. First responders of fire and EMS, but also I highlight rescue and specifically law enforcement, 49% prior to EMS arrival, there are people there doing CPR and then statewide, it's 47%. One thing that Duke University has really been impressed with is how engaged our law enforcement community is with responding to cardiac arrests. That doesn't always happen everywhere, but as you all know, we have a great team approach here. So they're always listening and they're running ahead of us. Sometimes a deputy may be way down in Montford Cove and we're 15 minutes away and they can really make a difference and an impact on the outcome of that patient. One area that we continue to focus on and work on, and we're really going to highlight this year and share a little bit about what we're going to do at the end of this, is AEDs being applied prior to EMS arrival. You can see our average is 38% and the state average is 60%. A lot of that comes from being in a remote area. You know, someone goes into cardiac arrest in a home, most homes aren't going to have an AED on site. We've done a lot of work with some of our communities, gated communities that have AEDs posted, they have response teams, but we're going to continue to highlight that. We've got all of our AEDs, anytime we know of one, we've mapped that on our 911 system and Amberly and Karen have done a phenomenal job there. So for example, if a church has an AED, we've got that noted with the location. Maybe someone calls 911 at the church, they don't know they have an AED, they can give them directions on where that's at to get and continue that care. So that's going to be a big push for us this year. This is going to highlight on the dispatch side, so one of the things that's really difficult in the comm center and Karen and you guys can step in if I miss something for you here. But you can see, I'm super impressed with bystander CPR with dispatcher assistance is at 61%. The state average is 42%. So what that means is when someone calls into 911, hopefully they've recognized that it's a cardiac arrest because of all the great public education we've done. But sometimes people call in and they don't know what's going on. They may think their loved one is breathing or they don't know that they're in cardiac arrest or don't have a pulse. So that dispatcher has to be on the phone trying to figure out, listen in the background, hear how many times the patient's breathing and know to exit to that protocol where they're teaching them how to do CPR real time on the phone. And so their rates of doing that are phenomenal and the amount of time it's taking them to do that is really great. Y'all got anything to add to that? No? Very proud. So I wanted to highlight a couple of the recent survivors that we've had. A lot of these are de-identified, obviously for HIPAA compliance, but the first one here, this gentleman's actually had two cardiac arrests in the last 12 months or so. The first one was, he came to the station for a blood pressure check and while he was receiving his blood pressure check, his wife actually made him come, he collapsed in the floor, went into cardiac arrest, received immediate CPR, immediate defibrillation and was resuscitated within about three to five minutes and taken to mission. About two months later, he called 911 again to his home and was having another cardiac incident and then subsequently went into another witness arrest en route to mission. This gentleman comes by the station quite often, bringing us baskets of fruit and all kinds of snacks and we love to see him, but he's been a really great survivor story. So he came to our last staff meeting and brought all his family and we got to spend some time with him. Another one here, we've got a 67-year-old female. This is witnessed by a family member. The husband was able to do immediate CPR with the help of dispatch until EMS arrived and then we got ROSC. And ROSC means return of spontaneous circulation. So that's when someone's heart starts beating again on their own. We have a 46-year-old female, this is again witnessed by a family member, husband performed CPR and then ROSC was obtained. A 71-year-old female, this one highlights our law enforcement partnership. They were there within two minutes of the collapse. This came in as a respiratory call. The patient actually collapsed while on the phone, lost contact with the comm center. Law enforcement hears that information come from comm and immediately responds and they're able to resuscitate the patient as EMS arrives. A 33-year-old female witnessed by the family member again, immediate CPR. So that highlights survival rates with good narrow truly come from bystander CPR. So our big push is always to teach people how simple CPR is and that comes through our community events. And it's truly, it doesn't have to be a certification card and we really push this, whether we're, you know, doing PR events or career fairs or doing Narcan training for some of the organizations throughout the county. We can throw a 10-minute talk in there about CPR, hands-only CPR, do you know where your AED is, do you have a response plan? These are just some photos highlighting some of the community education we've done in the last few months. Again, career fairs, we've got a touch of truck here where kids can come, check out the ambulances. Match, I'm sure you guys have heard of, we do a lot of health events with them where we do blood pressure screenings. But again, a two or three-minute talk about CPR, maybe a handout about CPR can make all the difference. A lot of interaction with kids, our safety camp, we run them through a whole CPR class and scenarios at the end. And we've actually had not only kids who have come back and told us about times they've used 911, but we have people, it makes me feel old, but who work for us now, who came through safety camp years ago. So I want to highlight another initiative that's come up this year in Spanish CPR. So probably like five years ago, Brenda and I went to Coula Centro Unido Latino Americano and we'd done our first Spanish CPR class. And since then, Brenda's done a phenomenal job with ramping this up. And so this year, she partnered with Coula to do two different CPR classes for their staff. And actually about three or four weeks after their first class, they actually had a cardiac arrest event where one of their volunteers suddenly collapsed at one of their events. And so they felt very empowered and prepared to be able to know how to do this. And even though a lot of these folks are bilingual, it's very different to learn something in a language that isn't your native language. I speak Spanish, but I don't want to learn things in Spanish because I'll miss things. So this has made a huge impact in the community. More recently, Brenda partnered with McDowell Tech. And so I'm sure you've all heard about McDowell Tech and their initiatives to offer different courses in Spanish. And so some of the folks have come through with construction, with HVAC, electrical, and they're getting their CPR certification fully in Spanish. These have been some of the most fun and engaging classes we've done. So these are happening, they're eight-hour days, they get CPR, first aid, Narcan training, they get a little bit of everything that day. So kind of to end what our focuses are going to be coming up, and I didn't highlight, but our resuscitation rate is 14%. That may seem low, but the national average is 10%. And so we want to keep pushing that number as high as we can. We know there are countries that have upwards of 20% based on, like we talked about, these rings of survival. So increasing our access to AED and so that people can defibrillate patients immediately, public education, making sure that people know how to recognize cardiac arrest. And so that's what we're really going to be focused on. Kim Efler came to our recent meeting with Duke University and has been super engaged about engaging the business communities. A lot of the business here already participates in annual CPR refresher courses, they've got AEDs on site, but really ramping that up, making sure we have plans, where are they, how do they access the AEDs and those types of things. So the other thing we want to work for this year is to increase our community CPR classes. We're offering those constantly. We'll go out and do them for churches or whoever, non-certification courses. But we're looking to do something in our building as a community event, maybe on like a quarterly basis where anyone could come, have a free CPR training. It's not a certification, but it would certainly give them the knowledge and empower them to be able to do that. On the 911 side, again, if I miss anything for you guys, feel free to fill in. It's very difficult for them to listen to that first statement and decide what's happening. So they do call review every cardiac arrest, they're listening to those calls and seeing, could we have recognized it 10 or 15 or 20 seconds sooner? They've done a lot of work, you know, they have electronic protocols, they're having to type things in and go to the next page and they've trained them, if you hear the patient's not breathing or not breathing normally, skip to the CPR, all right? They're going to tell you if they don't need CPR. Start CPR and we'll work the rest out later. So we're getting as quick as we can on recognizing those phrases and then of course, navigating EMD, which takes a lot of time and muscle memory. And with that, I'll take any questions or do you have anything to add?
Just to add one point, there's a lot of data in that PowerPoint presentation. But I think the important thing to remember when we're talking about cardiac arrest care is those survivors represent mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, grandchildren. There's a story and there's a face behind every one of those survivor stories. And while we can't share the ones that have to be de-identified, it's a powerful thing for us to see those families walking around town or come up to a crew in a restaurant. My grandfather was resuscitated by EMS in the late 80s and it still remains one thing that inspires me to push our team forward every day is because from 1988 to 2003, I grew up with a grandfather who resuscitated him out off of Lakeview Drive. The service that our folks provide matters and the funding that you provide and the citizens provide, it impacts lives in this community daily. I wish we could report every single case that we have to you because there's people and there's families behind these stories. And it's a powerful thing. There's one lady that walks around town that we see all the time, was resuscitated by our agency in 2010 and was in one of the first group of patients that received therapeutic hypothermia. We were one of 100 agencies in the nation providing it in 2010. It's those stories that are inspiring. And we present a lot of data and we look at a lot of data, but the one thing that we always try to mention is there's a face and there's a family behind each one of those stories. We appreciate your continued support and we look forward to continuing to try to push these numbers upwards because it does make an impact in this community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We really appreciate the work you do, William and Adrian and staff. Y'all are, in our opinion, you're the best nationwide and it's all about the patient outcome and the results are just proven. The training you guys do and ladies do is making a big impact. So we really appreciate what you're doing.
I was kind of looking forward to seeing my picture up there.
Definitely put your picture up there. And I would also want to mention the partnerships because the fire rescue volunteers that get out of bed at 3:00 in the morning, to go to the cardiac arrest, to get over the mobile calls, the law enforcement officers that have, and the agencies that have supported this program. It doesn't matter what color the vehicle is or the uniform. The citizen is in need and this county has banded together and worked together as a team for many, many years and we'll always make sure that continues.
Well, I've always said ever since that incident happened with me that first of all, it was God and I give Him the glory for sparing my life, but secondly, it was the good work of the EMS here in McDowell County. And I will forever be beholden to you guys for being there seeing.
And to highlight the partnership, when my father-in-law has, we've had to call on his behalf, and the first unit there was Donnie, the Sherrill Fire Department, Donnie Tipton. And Donnie has started diminishing the care that he needed and was ready when EMS arrived on the scene and just there was a continuation of just great patient care.
I do want to verbalize too, we haven't had the opportunity to say thank you to 911. You guys are a big part of the communication and getting people out there and it is a tremendous job and y'all do excellent work. And I do want to just say thank you to all of you. As we've said before, but getting businesses involved, which you've been doing for years, love hearing about the churches and the free training, even though it's not certified. I do think you guys are world class, all of you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you, William and Adrian and all your staff. Y'all doing an incredible job and Chairman Walker's already said that y'all are the best in the nation and we appreciate everything y'all do for our citizens.
Appreciate it. I appreciate the comment about, it doesn't matter what color the uniform is, everybody in this county works together. in this county works together, and we appreciate that. I remember one call when I was working with the sheriff's office, I don't remember who was on the ambulance that day, but they said, "We don't have a driver." And I said, "Yes, you do, let's go." So we left a patrol car sitting, and we took the ambulance. That's just the way things work here, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And this time, let's move to item A under O Business, and this will be the broadband update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
It's a tough act to follow. For broadband, I'd hope to have more information for you tonight as far as an update on our grant status. I feel like we're right on the precipice of receiving a notification from the state on our completing access to broadband or cab grant. I get about an email a week now where they're saying, "Get ready, it's coming, be prepared." And so just to get a quick hit on it, the state is doing the advertisement on this project. They are essentially putting out a map of unserved locations in this county, and they are saying to not the whole world, but pre-qualified companies, which there's about eighteen or so across the country, that could come in and essentially bid on that work. And so it'll be a process after that, essentially RFP, that the companies that provide the most addresses that could be served under budget, that have a reputation, that are, and a lot of that reputational screening has happened already. And so it'll be a process, the county is selecting the bidder with some assistance from the state on the technical side. So hopefully by next month, we'll have that at least out, and we'll be able to report on that. So very exciting.
Okay. Let's move to next item under O Business, and that would be the building projects. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I've mentioned in order of probably preference or prominence, some of our projects here, I've got DSS building first. Last fall, you authorized the firm Little, which is based in Charlotte, to do some preliminary planning for a DSS building, really with the goal of getting an idea from state regulations, staffing needs, et cetera, what would be necessary for the next twenty-five, thirty years for a building for the staff now and for that timeframe. And so we're working through that. They've presented some preliminary plans and are being revised based on some feedback, and we'll provide further information to you as we receive it. Again, with the goal of getting that information and advocating to our state general assembly for assistance with that facility. So as I said, as I get information, I'll pass it on to you for that project. The next item, I have transfer station repairs. I've had this on the agenda before and taken it off when it's maybe not timely, but primarily what I'm talking about right now is the actual structure at the top of the hill, the transfer station. So we've had an engineered plan for about a year, year and a half perhaps, that has had to go through multiple layers of review at the state level. We're meeting, I believe, next week as a, hopefully a final meeting before it goes out to bid. And this is a repair that will shore up some deficiencies with that facility and keep it there for many years to come. Not quite related to that project, we have been looking per your direction at a second set of scales there at the scale house to help with the traffic flow. I get a lot of calls about the road, especially after it rains. We've had a drainage pipe there that has collapsed that is going to be replaced, that will help out. So there's a lot of work to be done up there that is all in process. Some requires, like this one, the state, and some does not, like the scales and like the culvert and the road. So we're working to expedite some of those things to, you know, make it a little bit more of a pleasant experience for folks. We understand it's not a national park or anything of that quality, but we want people to be able to get in and out and not have issues with that, especially on rainy day.
What will be in this, that timeline? If we get the bids back and the board approves the low bidder to purchase the scales and have them installed?
I believe you previously approved, moved forward with the scales, so we're waiting on one more bid. So the idea would be to get the lowest bids with that. And I think what we talked about before was since it's equipment, we could, depending on the cost, we don't have other funds, we may have to finance it, but over three or four years, but I should know something in the next week, I think is the deadline. We've given that third vendor, but we've had them come in and provide quotes to us, so we'll move forward with selecting the lowest and most appropriate as soon as we can on that. Because that would be a big relief for folks, especially on a Saturday. That's one of the biggest holdups, is just the one set of scales ran it out. Try to get in the fifth gear on that one. The recreation center, we've talked about rebidding that project. We had a bid opening scheduled several weeks ago, and we only had two bidders, and so we had to postpone the opening, which will be this Thursday afternoon, the fourteenth. And then lastly, we've talked about planning for a new animal shelter. We've got a site identified on two twenty-six South and County property. We've had to go through numerous environmental studies, and the last one was completed last week. So we should have that report any day now.
Okay. Comments or questions concerning the building projects? They're being asked, and the next item, I'm C, under O Business, this would be water system projects.
Thank you. Just quickly, to go through the NEBO side of things, work is pretty much done on Highway one twenty-six. It's been done on Lonesome Pine for a while. They're starting on Sunny Acres, I believe, this week. And so Bentwood Drive is coming shortly, and as well as Jack Corpening in Nevada, Gimpsey. So we'd like to schedule, at this point, it's a ceremonial groundbreaking, maybe in a few weeks, possibly on Bentwood Drive. We've had a couple on that road that have really been great advocates for public water, so I'm trying to coordinate something with them, get you all out there, schedule allows. The next item, we did have a bid opening for Hoppy Tom Hollow Water Line for that road. Again, we had a state grant for that project, and mentioned in your memo, at that time of preparation, we did not have a bid tabulation. But if you look at your table, you do have a bid tabulation and a resolution. And so we're asking that you approve the receipt of the bids and awarding the bid to, can't read it off here, for Carolina Specialties Construction for seven hundred forty-six thousand and ninety-eight dollars for that low bid.
Okay. What's question, board?
We approve.
Second discussion, all favors, say aye. Any opposed last night?
Thank you. The rest under NEBO, just a lot of updates of work we've got underway, various stages. Will mention, under the Providence area, West Marion Elementary area, we did receive the letter of intent to fund. I've talked about that for maybe three or four months. And so we're working with Foothills Regional Commission on getting the engineering requests for qualifications out, and hopefully have those turned around the target of next month for having that awarded. And so that would be a selection, and then there's, you know, design that has to happen. The chairman was asking me earlier when I thought maybe construction would start, please don't, well, you can quote me at this point, I can always be wrong, but I would guess no sooner than a year. So it takes time to get the engineer and then get the project going as far as design. And so that would be our hope at least, on that side. So no action on that side of town.
Okay. And let's move to Mary, a new business, item B, the Marion Fire Department request.
Thank you. I wanted to formally pass on a request from city council to have a joint meeting to talk about Marion Fire Department funding. And again, as you see and you understand, you have an interlocal agreement where you're funding fifty percent of the Marion Fire Department. And so I've been communicating with the city manager on dates that are not Wednesday night and do not conflict with youth sports. And so we're working on that date now, maybe, it might get into April, maybe after Easter at this point. So I'll communicate, and Ms. Allison will, with you on scheduling that date.
Is it evening meeting?
Probably evening, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Okay. Now let's move to item B, this would be the animal control update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Just heard a lot about history tonight. Just a quick history and recap. Animal control, I was with the county, but I was not the manager, so it's been over eight years ago, it's closer to ten, if not fifteen, where the animal control function moved from what was then the Public Works Department to the sheriff's office. When that function moved, two staff members moved over and eventually became deputies. One of those staff members, so both of those individuals were employed by the sheriff up until recently, one still is, and doing other duties, and one that was primarily focused on animal control left to go seek other employment somewhat recently. And so when things tend to happen, people leave and things maybe change, it did cause, I guess, the situation to be reevaluated. The sheriff did reach out, initiate a conversation about perhaps the function of animal control coming back, what I would call under the county manager's purview instead of the sheriff general department. And so I've kept you up to date with communications I've had with them as far as what that would look like. I've talked to him various times about supervision and collaboration and so forth. And so after several months of discussions with the sheriff about what that would look like, and also with funding, the request that I'm bringing to you tonight is that the function be moved into the Animal Services Department, which is now led by Taylor Settlemeyer, which is primarily the shelter. And I have spoken with her on a preliminary level, and she's willing and very excited about that prospect. And so we're asking for that to be done. I have discussed with the sheriff and shared with you discussions about how to pay for that function, because it is something that does require a cost. And so we're working on offset of the expense from federal revenue for, that we receive at the law enforcement center. And so if you approve that shift of responsibility back to the manager's authority, the Animal Services Department, we would start that hiring immediately and try to get that process going, because it's going to take a while to find people from that position.
Can I make a motion to accept as presented?
Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What happened to the talks about this going under the Health Department?
That was a discussion that was had, and the recommendation right now is to start in our Animal Services Department, with keeping an open mind that that might be something to look at. That has happened in Rutherford County, and it may be of interest here eventually, but the recommendation is to start.
I really feel one hundred percent that personally, that we'd be better off under the animal shelter, that that would be where it would be taken care of, that your animal services take care of it. I don't want to see it go to the Health Department.
That'd be two officers, correct?
Yeah.
And all fairly funded, I mean, paid for, federal funding.
So renegotiation.
That's right. But I have spoken with the Health Director, and she's willing if...
So we're talking about hiring two enforcement officers?
Right. They would be civilians, they would not be authorized or scored.
Who's going to do the enforcement?
The civilians would do...
Civilians can't do the law enforcement part?
Not on arrests, and they can do citations, but they cannot do arrests.
How do they do a citation?
Civilians would be authorized to do a civil citation.
Okay. What about the laws that are misdemeanor? Who does that?
Right. It would fall to assistance from sheriff's office.
Okay. I just want to be clear on who's going to do the enforcement part. I understand the running of the shelter, but when it comes to the enforcement part, that gets sticky.
Yes, sir. And I, that's a good, thank you, it's a good reminder that, talked about history earlier, when that function was under the manager's purview, not the sheriff's, there were a lot of phone calls that came in, either the commissioners or the manager's staff. Even with having staff out in the field, it'll pick up as far as your call volume, probably, hopefully more so here at the office and not, we're not going to send calls to you, but it is something that it will shift that burden back over, so.
And by doing this too, it would give time to see how Rutherford County comes across with it, see how, evaluate that.
We get all the calls and complaints anyway, so at least we'd have some, a little bit of jurisdiction there and be able to implement whatever we need to do to take care of the issues.
Okay.
Motion is second.
Discussion? Okay. All favors, say aye. Any opposed last night? Okay. Let's move to item C, this would be our budget update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
You do not have any budget amendments or project budget ordinances. I will point out, the property tax collection report from Ms. Anya Frey, she was at ninety-seven point four percent through February, and is, she wanted me to point out, it was higher than last year's number, so I told her I would do that. She also has a report that she added this month about delinquent collections, so if you have any questions, I want you to look at that. And those are for collections that happened from prior years. And Ms. Bell and I have started the fiscal year twenty-five budget process. So all the internal departments and external agencies have been sent their packets, and we're starting to get those coming in. So we'll start meeting, I have one tomorrow afternoon, so we'll get those going and have it presented in May.
I'd like to ask on the upcoming budget that's going to be for July one, that the nonprofits, I'd like to see the plan, one, where the money was spent last year, and two, where the money's planning to be spent for this year. And I'd also like to see the review from their board on the individual in charge of their individual work performance. I'd like to make that as a motion.
Okay. Second, second. Discussion, all favors, say aye. Any opposed last night? Okay. All right, let's go to item D, this would be administrative items. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Just two this month, you have EMS write-offs for the month of February, and there was an EMS grant match for cardiac monitors. It's an AFG federal grant. We have applied for this before, it's a very competitive, as you can see why with the ten percent match, the cost to replace all of our monitors would be almost eight hundred thousand dollars. And so if we were to get the grant, it would be about a eighty, seventy-nine thousand five hundred match, so it's a good deal. But I did want to get your sign off before we submit it.
Okay. Comments, questions, what's the players of the board?
Move for your approval.
Discussion, all favors, say aye. Any opposed last night? Okay, let's go to item E, board appointments, and Madam Clerk and/or county manager, how you'll handle that?
Do you have two, there's a lot of second ratings, but you have two appointments that only had one applicant per vacancy, if that makes sense. So for the Transportation Advisory Board, you had one applicant, and that was Ginger Webb, who's been a current member. And then for the Tourism Development Authority, you had one applicant, and that is Mr. Jeremy Poor, who is in a tourism-related position, which is the requirement for that position. He's a trails coordinator from McDowell.
Okay. We'll handle the transportation.
Just have the one.
A vote up or down then. All in favor of the applicant?
So, move.
Check.
Right, discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose last night. Okay. It's five of eight. And let's see, TDA, what's the players of the board concerning that board?
Move we approve.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. I oppose last night. Okay. Let's go to tax matters, item F. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. These are your typical releases, refunds and rebills from the tax assessing and tax collections.
Move we approve, tax matters.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. All right. And you oppose last night.
I've got one more item I'd like to bring up if possible. Mr. Chairman, it was, and I had mentioned this to Mr. Wood near a while back and I just wanted to get this on the, maybe one of the next agenda, maybe talk about it. But I've got some concern and I know a lot of other people do with the roadside trash problem we have here in the county. And, you know, I think in an effort to identify and hold accountable these people that seem to have no respect or no love for our county and are willing to just continue to throw this stuff, this trash out the windows of their vehicles, I would like to recommend that the county, working alongside the sheriff's department, purchase some cameras and post them in the problem areas that we have right now and see if we couldn't address this issue and maybe put a stop to some of this.
And the cameras be mobile where we can move them from space to place. So, 100%, is that a motion?
Well, I'll put it in a motion if you guys are ready for it.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. I oppose last night. Okay.
Now, that also includes trash blowing out of pickup trucks and stuff like that because it's amazing.
It would include that. I mean, anywhere that there's a camera at and that infraction is seen, you know, they would have to be held accountable for it.
Good. All right. Motion carries. Next thing is another item we brought up, which would be illegal immigration and the need to, their resolution stating we expect the border to be closed with funding cut to illegals and that's something staff could work on and bring back next month.
Yes, sir.
I do want to just point out too that with illegals coming in, Medicaid picks up 100% of the cost of medical to 18 years old and younger. They pick up all life-threatening accidents or to any age. And that in itself, no problems, people coming into the country legally, but our tax dollars are going to that and we have many other issues, mental health issues, homeless issues, veterans issues that I would like to apply that money to before going to illegal aliens. And that's one of the reasons why we're bringing this up, but thank you.
Make a motion, Mr. Ellis.
Make a motion. Staff works on the resolution.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. I oppose last night. Okay. Let's go to assistant comment and Mr. Attorney. Okay. Reports, communications, Mr. Wood. More than anything.
No, you meet next week?
I would like to bring up a trash at the convenience places. I've been told by four different people in the county and Silver's Welch, Old Ford area that people are coming in with business trucks throwing away in the convenience center. And I would like to bring up again for the vote, for a vote come budget time, that taxes paid by McDowell County people on their vehicles get a, some kind of sticker that goes on their right or left front bumper so that the attendant can see and either deny the people to throw away the trash, but have that in there because we are paying for that, them coming into the county. We got to do something. And that's just as a proposal, I'm not making a motion at this time.
Yeah. You know, let the attendant check their license, their identification.
It does get very busy out there at Silver's Welch and I know it does out of Sugar Hill. I know it gets very busy in the PG area and I don't think the, and it's usually, usually older or retired people getting something that helps us out, which is very good and I like that, but I don't know if they have the speed to keep it moving so quickly. But if they could do some spot checks, it would be helpful. Yeah. We got to do something.
James Wood, look into that and give the board recommendations for next month. We'll have some idea.
We chased that one many times and it got unresolved.
Many times. Still got problems.
It looks like that if they know that it's a business vehicle, it's identified somewhere or other, if the attendant's got time, jot the name and the number down off the side of the vehicle, forward it to us.
That would be non-confrontational.
And that don't cost you a dime.
Yeah. That would be non-confrontational and we got to do something and I appreciate, appreciate that.
Okay. No other business there here, motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
So, move. Second. Discussion, no favors, say aye. I oppose last night. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks for being here tonight.